I'd like to welcome the audience to the May 16th, 2017 Parish Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Would you all please stand as Coach says the prayer and invocation.
My prayers are called again. We come thanking thee for allowing us to see another blessed day. Thank thee for life, for health, and strength, and give us a light, seems in our shortcomings, and make us fit. And we pray, Lord, for those who suffer throughout the land. We pray for their young victims, family, and students who, in one of our local schools, have been injured from gunshot. And we pray that you comfort them at this time. And we do, Lord, and think, "All you have to do is just speak a word, and everything will be fine." And we just pray that you can take care of both families. We pray for this staff. We pray for this board. And ask a special blessing for those who have come to tonight seeking our help. Let the Holy Spirit guide and lead us, and we might do it, for which is right. This is my office of prayer. I may want to follow the Son of the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
I pray for thee to be the fire in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Christie, would you please call the roll?
Chair Jake Porche.
Here.
Vice Chair Art Little.
Here.
Mr. Randy Armitaur.
Here.
Ms. Betty Brown.
Ms. Latricia Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Julia Dickerson.
Here.
Ms. Sharon Galicia, whose accent. Mr. Kyle Link.
Here.
Mr. Gary Navar, is that a town? Mr. Kirk Smith.
Here.
Ms. LaSalle Williams.
Here.
And Ms. Betty Brown.
Chair.
Okay. Did you note that Ms. Betty Brown?
Yes, I just noticed that. So there'll be eight voting, and if it's a tie vote, then I'll ask you to go.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Christie.
You're welcome.
This is an 11-member board. It will take a majority of those members present to grant or deny any requests heard tonight. The Chair will refrain from voting unless that vote might affect the outcome. The meeting will be conducted with me reading the request from the agenda. The planning staff will give a presentation and report their recommendations. If the applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation, or if someone from the audience has comments, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and the nature of your request. All persons wishing to speak on an agenda item, other than the applicants, need to fill out a blue Request-to-Apire Form located in the back of the room. The form must be given to a staff member prior to the reading of the agenda item. As required by this board's bylaws, in all cases, the proponents will be limited to 10 minutes. Opponents will be granted 10 minutes as well, with each speaker allowed no more than three minutes. I recommend that a spokesperson be selected if there's a large group wanting to speak on the same agenda item. If four or more Speaker Request Forms are submitted, the time allowed for individual speakers will be limited based upon the number of forms submitted. The Chair has the right to limit speakers who present redundant information or personal attacks on the board. In unique situations, the Chair may extend, or the board may vote to extend, the time allotted for speakers. After this discussion, the board will vote on each request. I will announce the decision of the board after the vote. Preliminary subdivision approval and the zoning exceptions and variances are final tonight. The road abandonment and rezoning cases will go before the police jury for final action on May 18th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being taped by the Calcahue Parish Government Channel and can be viewed on Wednesday and Thursday following the meeting. For additional run dates, check the website at www.cppj.net. Channel 5 in Lake Charles Sulfur, Moss Bluff, Westlake, Vinton, Dequincy, and Gillis. Channel 99 in Carless and Grand Lake. At this time, I would ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices or noisemakers. Going to item 5, I'm sorry. Take appropriate action to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2017, Planning and Zoning Meeting. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, and a second by Coach Williams. All in favor, state "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Item 5 passes. Item 14 has been withdrawn, and for clarification, item 14 is case RZ01-027-17, a request by Titan Rental Companies LLC to rezone from Mixed Residential to Manufactured Home Park to allow Manufactured Home Park at the northwest corner of Cypress Lake Drive and Clyde Drive in Ward 1. That has been withdrawn. Item 6. Take appropriate action on State Avenue Investments to allow preliminary subdivision approval for a single-family residential subdivision, 102 lots in Edgerly Estates in the 4,700 block of Edgerly Road in Ward 6. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Little, and a second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located south of Dequincy and encompasses over 116 acres of agricultural zone land. If approved, the subdivision would be built in three phases. The lots, which will be one acre larger in size, will be sold for new home construction. Because the development meets the requirements for agricultural zoning, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development is subject to an application for and/or compliance with an LPDES; stormwater discharge permit, which may be required through the Department of Environmental Quality or the Calcahue Parish Division of Planning and Development; that prior to submittal of engineering plans, the preliminary plat and the drainage impact analysis or appropriate waiver must be approved by the Division of Engineering; and that the developer submit an approval letter from Ward 6, Fire Protection District Number 1, based upon alternative means of water access prior to submittal of engineering plans.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to this agenda item. However, if the applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation, you may come to the podium at this time. It's not required, but if you would... Okay. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Item 6 passes. Moving to item 7. We do have two blue cards in opposition for this agenda item. Take appropriate action on a request by Crystal Frugé to allow preliminary subdivision approval for a single-family residential subdivision, 16 lots in Preon Lake subdivision... Preon Lake Place subdivision, sorry. At 4511 West Preon Lake Road in Ward 3, I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property abuts the City of Lake Charles's boundary and encompasses over five acres of single-family residential zone land. If approved, the owner will sell the land to a developer who plans to subdivide the land into the proposed lots. The lots vary in size from just over 10,000 square feet to 17,760 square feet. The lots would be sold for new home construction. Because the development meets the requirements for single-family residential zoning, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development is subject to an application for and/or compliance with an LPDES permit, which may be required; that prior to submittal of engineering plans, the preliminary plat and the drainage impact analysis or appropriate waiver must be approved by the Division of Engineering; and that the development is subject to a letter from the City of Lake Charles Water System.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. If the applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation, you may come to the podium at this time. And please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Brett Ellis. I live at 4313 West Preon Lake Road, Lake Charles. You've seen the project, 16 homes. The smallest lot is 10,000 square feet, largest is, I believe, near 17,000 square feet. I did bring a rendering to show what it's going to look like. This is the entrance from your view from the west side of West Preon Lake. I did meet with a group of the residents last Thursday and discussed concerns, and we are very aware of the community, of the neighborhood, as I live within a quarter mile of the site myself. Primary concern that we heard at the meeting was drainage and the concern about what would happen with the new development. And we have absolutely every intention of not impacting the neighborhood through drainage, and we'll comply with anything and everything the parish needs for us to, you know, for the engineering and the construction both, to follow the drainage study that we're going to be turning in and to make sure that we don't impact. Another concern was the quality of the homes. I'm hoping this picture will answer some of those concerns. Our minimum size will be 2,400 square feet, but we think they'll be closer to 3,000 and above. It's a high-end community. The homes will all be custom-built, with the exception of maybe two units that we will build as spec homes to act as a catalyst to get it started, but they will be spec homes with a custom flair. And every attempt will be made to resell those before they sell, so that they can get their owner's finishing touches as well. And I'll reserve my time for afterwards if I need to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, sir. You may be seated. This time, I will call Mr. Philip Blair.
My name is Philip Blair. I live at 4421 West Preon Lake Road. I'm just the third house down from the entrance to this development. I'm speaking on behalf of the group of homeowners that we met with Brett. And my primary concern is addressing the drainage issues. Having lived there for many years, many of us know exactly what we are dealing with. And I'm also the president emeritus of Lake Charles Country Club, which backs up to there, so I'm representing the Lake Charles Country Club also in a drainage issue. I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but this is a Google Earth view down over the top. Excuse me. For me, the drawings. I think I have one for each of you. You'll be able to see the footprint of the development there. And I just want to point out a couple of issues that we discussed during Brett's review when we met with him. The square... The square on the face of the outline in red is Preon Lake Road. You were looking from the development. If you have it in this configuration, you're looking to the north. That goes down to the intersection of Lock Lane, and you can see where York and Essex come across there. The portion to the right of the square, if you see, that is the golf course. That's the Lake Charles Country Club. The currently, based upon the elevations that we see there, which are approximately 14 feet at the development, the golf course elevations are approximately the same. So this whole area is very flat. All of us are at approximately 14 feet until you get to the north, and it begins to fall away. There's an angled arrow that goes to the corner of Somerset Road. That is a 48-inch drain that was never completed on to intersect with Preon Lake Road. But there is sheet flow that will go to that drain. On the intersection in a circle in the upper left-hand corner, that is the intersection of Lock Lane and West Preon Lake Road. Just to be aware, for us and for you, I have driven through that intersection in a Ford F-250 diesel to rescue people out of that intersection when the water stacks up. And that's what we're talking about here. I'm talking with Brett. They are looking at a drainage study after preliminary approval. Each one of us have either experienced flooding in this area here, both north and south, because the water flows in both directions. This is the central property. It's right across the street from Buddy and Laura Lynch and Cagle, excuse me, Chalkley Estates. Those are open ditch flows. During the last rain event, about two and a half hours after, and this is the last flooding event here in Lake Charles, which was on the 3rd, I believe, I have pictures on my phone, but I'm sorry, I didn't bring a thumb drive, but the water was stacked into these ditches and over the yards for all of us to the north. Our biggest concern here is that there is not enough capacity in the system right now to address the loss of five and a half acres of vegetative absorptive drainage and cover it with three and a half acres of hard surface. What's going to happen here at this point is the water's going to go somewhere. Our biggest issue is the, if you look on the red line that heads north, meanders north on the drawing, that is the Henderson Bayou Drainage. It, gravity drainage flows from Fairway Lane and from the south of us on Country Club Road, comes through the Country Club. The Country Club, with gravity drainage approval, graciously uses these as ponds, features, but it's a gravity drainage pathway. At the point where I started the drawing on the pond, that is a set of double 48s, which are discharges that go to this Henderson Bayou Drainage. The person right at the corner of that intersection, Preon Lake Road, where the "R" is, is Wilton and Mary Wallace. They were under four feet of water. That drainage stacks up. I just drove by there 15, 20 minutes ago. The water is up to the level of the edge of the bayou, simply because of the south wind effect that we have, and we have some high tides running right now, and we haven't had any rain for four or five days. Our concern here...
That's about half the time. I just want to let you know. I know there's some other people I want to talk to.
Certainly. All right. So anyway, my concern representing the homeowners here is that we would love to see an engineering and drainage study done prior to the preliminary acceptance, so that we would have at least some idea, and for our neighbors, of how this water is going to be evacuated.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blair? Any questions by the board for Mr. Blair? Thank you, sir. You may be seated. Mr. John Bradford.
My name's John Bradford. I live at 4431 West Preon Lake Road, just neighbors to Mr. Blair. I have a little different... Not only are we concerned about the drainage, and I'll talk more about that, but we're concerned about traffic flow. We're concerned about what type of covenants they're going to have. We saw a picture of buildings, but is that really what's going to be built? You know, I mean, I trust, I'd like to trust the developer, but I really think we're entitled to know what they're going to do before you make any decisions, preliminary or not. When you give them a preliminary approval, I believe that is giving them the green light to go ahead and spend money. You're authorizing them, and they may spend a lot of money to begin with, and what you're setting up is a conflict between neighbors when we really don't want to have a conflict. We don't mind appropriate development, but we want to know what he's planning on doing exactly. Not, "This is what I may do," or "This is what I want to do." What will you do? And until people know exactly what they're going to do, until we know what he's going to do... Good example, he says, "I know I'm going to have to retain water, and I'm going to do it underground." Well, we haven't seen anything. And if he does it underground and he puts a little box that doesn't retain sufficient water, we're going to flood. And so we don't know what he's planning on doing. And I want to tell you, it's a real hard thing to clean up after a flood when a little pre-study of what's going to occur would allow us not to get everybody in an uproar and come here. We have plenty of neighbors here who are worried about what's going to be happening. And their worry and anxiety is because we really don't know. We had a meeting with Mr. Ellis, and it was very courteous. Nobody got mad. We just wanted to know. He said, "I really don't know yet. I haven't had my plans drawn. I haven't had my engineering done. I haven't really done a lot." Okay? So if he spends money for this, and he might spend, say, a million dollars to buy the property, or whatever it is, well, and then we're in a big uproar because what he's planning to do won't cover it, you're going to cost him a million dollars. So are we then costing him a million dollars, or you costing him a million dollars, when a little effort, a little delay? We would like you to defer what's happening until we actually see what his drainage plans are, until we actually see some physical plans, if he's got some. He says he's going to build two, so he's got to have some plans before he starts building, so we could see what his... How this neighborhood will mesh with everybody else in the neighborhood. We would just like to... We would just like to get some information. And by your approving of this right now, they go down the road, and it's a train. It's going down the road. Everybody, get out of the way, because it's coming. We may have some meetings, and I would like to avoid... I would ask you, please, because I don't like conflict, and I would... But that's what I do in my business, is conflict. I'd rather not have it. I would rather us cooperate, but you can't cooperate when you don't know any information. You don't know what he's going to put underground. You don't know how much water this is going to aggregate and put into the system. We know there's a storm drain there. How are they going to deal with that? What are your... We asked the parish for their plans. We didn't get what they did when they other stormed drain. We don't know, and that gives us a concern, and it ought to give you a concern too, because you don't know, and you're asked to approve something, that you see a picture and a concept, but no real meat to the issue. Thank you.
Any questions at this time by the board? Comments by the board? This time, I'll call the applicant back up to address the concerns.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tom Gale. My address is 713 Kirby Street here in Lake Charles. I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Ellis as the developer. We're all familiar with the way the subdivision process goes. This is a preliminary plat approval. Y'all get to make the decision if this is an appropriate land use. It's single-family residential use houses. They are similar to the other design of the houses there. They're not coming in with a different product. They're not coming in with anything that is not already in the neighborhood, so it's consistent with the use. They've met all the technical requirements. And as we go through the review process, once we get, assuming we get preliminary approval, then we go through and we do the drainage study, and then we do the traffic study if it's required, and then you go through the entire process. And the phrase that Mr. Connor and his team are going to use over and over again is "zero off-site impact." And zero off-site impact says, "You can't increase the drainage burden on your neighbors, or they'll never approve the plans." And so that's why we go through this process. And then at whatever time the engineering department does finally approve it, then we come back in for final approval. And so we get to have another hearing. So this doesn't conclude the process. This only starts the process. We go through the engineering. It's a public records review. Anybody's welcome to go. Mr. Ellis has offered to allow the neighbors to be able to participate in the process. If they want to go in and double-check and see what the civil engineers who are doing the site work want to do, they're welcome to participate in it. But I don't want to create a problem for the neighborhood, because it's going to affect the value of their product. Now, we all know, nobody sitting in this room goes to their neighbors and pre-approves their plans and says, "Okay, Mr. Neighbor, this is what I want to build. Is it okay with you?" Because your neighbor's taste may not be like yours. If you want to do that, you have to go into a planned development where you have a subdivision that's restricted with an Architectural Control Committee. That's whenever you get a chance to review plans. This is not a restricted subdivision. It's a raw piece of land that's still in the parish. It has not been subdivided before. It's not been restricted before. And so right now, the owner of the property gets to develop what he wants to develop. Now, we all know, this is some of the most expensive property in town, and so just the land value is going to dictate what you have to put on the product in order to justify the cost of it. And so that in itself is going to take care of it, but it's going to be restricted. You're going to have high-end homes. Mr. Ellis and his partners have already developed a very nice subdivision in downtown Lake Charles, and I think you might have been on Moss and Division Street and seen the high-density homes that are there. This is not that product, but they're here and they're building, and they're doing other things in the city of Lake Charles, and they've made a very substantial development and a very nice subdivision that is different from the market that this is, but they've also gone out there and done that. So they do good work, and they have a good reputation for what they're willing to do. So I think the concerns of the neighbors are going to be addressed as part of the process, and at the end of the day, I think we're going to be satisfied that there's a very nice, high-end subdivision that's going in. It's going to be, hopefully, an increase in property values. Hopefully, it's going to be consistent with the use, and we're certainly going to do whatever engineering requires them to do. Any questions? Anything that we didn't address?
Any questions for Mr. Gale, the applicant?
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Any questions or comments by the board?
Mr. Sheriff, I could just, very quickly, I wanted to address a couple of things. The first thing that I wanted to let folks know is that the property is zoned, single-family residential, which within the unincorporated areas, that is our most restrictive zoning. And pretty much the only type of home that you can put there is one that's site-built. So that in itself is quite restrictive from our perspective. And then on the drainage impact analysis, Mr. Gale was correct about how strict our engineering department is about those studies when they come in. And we have had similar situations where there have been drainage issues in neighborhoods where subdivisions are proposed, and, you know, in Calcahue Parish, it seems like that's becoming more and more common. But typically, you folks allow it to move forward with that preliminary subdivision approval pending the drainage impact analysis. And the last example that I can remember that a similar subdivision came before you guys was prior to the current wording on that stipulation about the drainage impact analysis having to be approved before the engineering plans can even be submitted. So there's another stopgap in the process if the drainage impact analysis doesn't come out to whether subdivision's feasible.
Sure. A couple of comments I would like to make. I live near this area, and definitely in the last few weeks, I would say drainage should be a concern for us everywhere throughout the parish. You know, and I know sometimes applicants or residents, you know, come through the meetings, and it seems like, you know, we may be putting the cart before the horse, but this is the process. It's a preliminary approval of the land use. Is the land use applicable to what the subdivision request is? It's in compliance. Are there drainage issues? Definitely. You know, I could see possible drainage issues, but I'm speaking for me personally here. I have, I can't make a decision with the, either the mistrust or the question that someone down the line in the process won't do their due diligence and do their job. We have a great staff here at the parish. Our drainage engineers are excellent, and I have to, whoever the developer hires to do their engineering, they're going to do their job, and they're going to make sure that it has zero impact. And we, you know, sometimes we have to make our decision to trust the process. But I do, having knowledge of the area, know that drainage will be, or I hope will be, a very high concern and be addressed accordingly. Any other questions or comments by the board?
I've got a...
Mr. Little?
I know this is a very big issue for a lot of families in that area. Been on the board, and this comes up quite often in regards to drainage. I've got a subdivision in my front yard that has been developing for a while, and drainage is an issue. It all dumps on me. But they did their diligence, and I think the drainage, the developer has done that. This particular area, to me, is a very high-end area, very dominant area, an area that's estates and mainstay of this, of southeast Lake Charles, or southern Lake Charles. I don't know if this is a particular piece of property that may need some review prior to further going on with the development. I know that, and I'm like our... I know that, and I'm, I'm like our president, I trust the, the people that making the decisions and the engineering department doing that, but whenever you get into estates of what this area is, where it is, I don't know if that's a, we may need to look at this again before we proceed with giving them approval to further the development. I know if we approve this, then they have to do their diligence to proceed with engineering and meet all the ends of it. I don't know myself, underground drainage, I don't know what they would do to drain this place with underground, because it's, it would take a pretty good-sized tank under there hiding something to be able to do that. But I, right now, I'm not sure if I can go along with the approval of this, just because of the options and not knowing of, because there's some estates in this place that are, been there forever. And what are they gonna bring in? Will they meet that? Do they have to meet that? I don't know what the, what the maximum size or minimum size home, but is there an allowance in our ordinance to say that they can come in and do some eighteen-hundred-foot homes, or whatever it is? Not knowing, will they meet that? If they get the drainage approved? That's, that's a concern of mine at this time.
I, I would say with the sixteen homes, I would, I would guess that the developer would, would build as much square footage as possible to get his return. But does the actual subdivision, preliminary subdivision approval state minimum square footage on the homes?
No. And keep in mind that subdivision restrictions, those types of things, are between private property owners, so we, we don't usually get involved in that. Our concern is more the building code for how the residences are constructed.
Correct. Any other questions or comments by the board? Ms. Christie, let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Cobb? Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Armitaur?
Yes.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yes.
Six far and two against.
Item seven passes. Moving to item eight. Take appropriate action on case VA-04-023-17, a request by Harper Real Estate LLC for a variance to increase the driveway radius requirements, allows fifteen feet, they're requesting thirty feet at nine-five-eight, is that Rabia? Ravia?
Rabia.
Rabia?
Rabia.
Rabia, Rabia Road and Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Coach Williams and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located south of Sulfur and encompasses nearly twelve acres of light industrial zone property. This zoning is a result of a request approved in 2013 to allow development of an industrial park. The driveway in question will be used for industrial traffic. Because the driveway is designed to accommodate large trucks, the staff recommends that the request be granted.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to item eight. However, if the applicant would like to speak, he may come to the podium at this time. Okay? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item eight passes. Item nine. We have two blue cards, but it appears they're both proponents of, of item nine. Take appropriate action on case VA-07-024-17, a request by Gabriel Prejean for a variance to allow two dwellings on one lot at 2151 Highway 109 South and Ward Seven. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace?
This property is in the Venton area and encompasses one acre of agricultural zone land. Until recently, there were two dwellings on the lot. These were the existing home and a manufactured home. The manufactured home was demolished last month, and when the home was removed, the grandfather clause for a second dwelling was lost. At this time, the petitioner would like to receive a variance to allow his great-grandson to locate a new home on the property, a twenty-six-foot-by-sixty-foot manufactured home. The great-grandson and his wife will assist the owner with daily living activities. Because replacement of a previous manufactured home will enable assistance for elderly family members, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adheres to the site plan on file with the division, provided that the director may authorize adjustments to site plans in light of technical or engineering considerations, and that the manufactured home be skirted prior to utilities being connected.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to item nine, but if the applicant would like to speak on your behalf, he may come to the podium at this time. Okay? We do have two blue cards. Tommy Clifton, may come to the podium, state your name and address.
I'm Clifton, 2153 Highway 109 South, Venton, Louisiana. I'd just like to speak and be there for the property there. We've been maintaining that property for a while. There was an old home there, which was Mr. Prejean's deceased daughter, and it got out of hand and kinda grew up in that area, and so we tore it down. Because my son, I, I travel a lot, and my son, he works in the area, so he's there with the elderly people and the neighbors around us. Anytime he need a hand with anything, he's, he's there for him, and just trying to keep him in that area close for my wife's grandparents to where one of them's in a chair and the other one's on a cane, can't get around too well.
Sure.
And his wife's there twenty-four-seven, and I travel off. I just like someone to be there that we can trust with all our family members.
Sure. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Clifton? Thank you, sir. You may be seen. Is it Sean Gary? No? Okay. All right. Any questions or comments regarding item nine? All right. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item nine passes. Item ten. Take appropriate action on case EX-04-011-17, a request by Dylan Myrick for an exception to allow residential development, manufactured home, at 407 Fontana Road and Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Coach Williams and a second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located in the Westlake area and encompasses a third of an acre of single-family residential zone land. The property was zoned R1 as a result of a 2002 study requested by area residents to maintain the single-family residential character of the area. If approved, the petitioner plans to locate a new twenty-eight-by-fifty-six manufactured home on the lot to service his personal residence. The attachment on your tablets includes the signatures of area residents who are not opposed to the request. Because a manufactured home is not inconsistent with the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhered to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments, and that the manufactured home be skirted prior to the utilities being connected.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to item ten, but if the applicant would like to speak, he may come to the podium at this time.
I had a speech prepared, but if there's no opposition, I'll save y'all the time.
We appreciate that.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
I'll ask. I'll call you up.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Any questions or comments, General? All right. Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item ten passes. Item eleven. Take appropriate action on case RA-01-002-17, a request by Brandon Terrell to abandon and revoke the original dedication of Bonnie Lane at 1306 Woodland Trail and Ward One. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Ms. Dickerson. Ms. Wallace?
This road is located in Moss Bluff and was dedicated to the police jury in 1974, at the same time Woodland Trail subdivision was adopted. The road was never constructed, and the petitioner who owns all four lots touching the road right-of-way constructed his home over a portion of the right-of-way. Upon discovering the conflict, he requested that the road be formally abandoned, and because the road was never constructed, the staff recommends that the request be granted.
Okay. We do not have any opposition to item eleven. If the applicant would like to speak, he may come to the podium. All right. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item eleven passes. Item twelve. Take appropriate action on case RZ-01-025-17, a request by Jonathan Murray to rezone from single-family residential R1 to central business commercial C3 to allow commercial development, auto truck sales at 3710 Highway 171 and Ward One. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulation.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located in the Gillis area and encompasses nearly two-tenths of an acre of single-family residential zone land. The property was originally zoned commercial, but was rezoned in 2007 to address the concerns of the mortgage company that financed the home constructed at this location. The petitioner owns the tract, the land where the house is situated, and the land to the north where he operates a used car lot. At this time, he would like to be able to store some auto inventory in front of his home, and to be in compliance with our codes and with the state regulations, the land needs to be rezoned. Because minimal impacts are to be expected, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the stipulation that vehicles may not be stored outside of the seventy-four-feet zone commercial.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to item twelve. If the applicant would like to speak, he may come to the podium at this time. Okay? Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor?
Just one minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Armitaur. I'm curious, I mean, the, the property, the mortgage company required to be zoned residential?
Yes, back in 2007.
Okay, so now there's no mortgage on the property, is what we're saying?
Well, we're just asking to rezone the front seventy-four feet, so that the actual home site, if you take a look at the area that's on the screen right now, the actual home site will still be zoned residential. So it's just basically his front yard.
Well, I mean, but what does the mortgage company have? You know, I mean, did something in the past to, to...
Well, back around that time...
...so the person can get a mortgage on the property.
Well, there was something with the mortgage company? It, it was almost like a trend. We had four or five all-in-one cluster that the mortgage company wanted the property zoned appropriately for that use.
Right. I understand that.
I'm not sure...
Is this something that, you know, okay, we're gonna do it, but we're gonna take it away later on? Type situation, you know? If it's still mortgage, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to, to support this, because it was done in good faith, but to appease the mortgage company, mortgage company done what they said, they loaned them the money. And now they're wanting to go around the mortgage company. It'd been nice to have the mortgage, some paperwork from the mortgage company saying it's okay to do this, you know?
I'm not sure if the applicants had discussions with the mortgage company?
Well, I think that should happen first, you know, because we done something, and, and he's doing something now that he done before, you know, to get it done, now he's wanting to undo it without their permission, you know? And they own some of this right now, still evidently, you know? They, they did this in good faith, knowing it would be zoned residential, not changed in a few years. So I, I'm hard-pressed until I see something from the mortgage company saying it's okay.
But is his mortgage paid off? That I can't tell you.
I mean, if he's here, maybe he could answer this question, or...
Is the applicant?
Is the applicant present? Are you here? The applicant's not here? No one? Okay.
I think some answers need to be, I need some answers before I could support this. I can't see going around somebody that.
Ms. Wallace, can you repeat the timeline as far as that Mr. Armitaur's referencing?
It, it was in 2007 when the property was rezoned from C3 to R1.
To obtain a mortgage on the home?
Yes.
Yes.
And like I said, that was sort of a trend at that time, and I can't speak specifically about this particular case, but it was my understanding that the mortgage company wanted to know that if something happened to the house, if it was damaged from a storm or a fire or something like that, they could just come in and get permits to rebuild it.
Okay.
It was as though the focus was just on the house, not necessarily on how...
But the mortgage, the whole property, it's theirs. You know, I, I really, I just, I can't do it.
So, so what, what is, what is the intent now to rezone it?
He would like the front portion to be rezoned back to commercial? Mm-hmm. So that he can park cars from, in his front yard and be in compliance.
Okay.
So the, the property the house is on would still be residential?
The, the land under the house and behind it would still be residential?
But not all the property that is mortgaged with the house will be?
The, yeah, the property that the residents are on.
No, because this is all mortgaged with the house. This property that they're wanting to rezone is mortgaged with the house.
We can't really say, because we don't have any documentation on the mortgage.
Well, that's why I think it should be at least deferred until we have somebody here to, to do this, you know, to, to answer these questions.
I have a question. If the home as it sits, if we rezone to C3, does that take it out of compliance as far as the remaining property, the remaining square footage that will still be R1? Is it over seven thousand, whatever our ordinance requires? Would it make it a non-conforming lot for that home?
I'm not sure. I would have to do the math on it. I don't know if folks in the back can...
Because that would, that would constitute whether he could, if it burns to the ground, whether he could rebuild.
No.
If it, if it's...
It would be grandfathered.
It would be grandfathered?
Even, even if you guys in the police jury rezone the entire piece of property?
Uh-huh.
There would still be a grandfathering on it.
Any other questions? Comments?
So are we able to defer? Is that something we want to do?
We could definitely defer if someone would...
Motion to defer.
Motion and a second and vote on the motion to defer. Thirty days?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion from Mr. Armitaur to defer for thirty days, and we've got a second from Mr. Little. Let's discuss, or any comments on the amendment or the motion to defer? Any questions or comments? All right?
Just make one comment.
Sure, Mr. Smith.
If I'm looking at the gold triangle, I mean, rectangle in this case, conceivably, he could cut off access to the house, due to the fact it's commercial. You could sell the house, but no one was...
Well, the lot line stays intact.
Right.
No matter what the zoning is.
Right, but I mean, if he, if he sells the house and keeps the commercial part...
He would have to subdivide it up.
Right. He'd have to subdivide it, and, and that's where he would lose his grandfather clause on the house, because he wouldn't have any road frontage.
Right.
We need to know if the mortgage is paid off.
Right. We don't know if the mortgage is paid off. I mean, these things need to be...
Okay. Any more discussion on the deferral? And then we can do a roll call vote, Ms. Christie, on the motion to defer for thirty days, or until June meeting.
Ms. Cobb?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Little?
So if we're wanting to defer, we say yes?
If you're wanting to defer, you say yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, that's good.
Did, Ms. Brown, Ms. Cobb, did you under, y'all, so y'all don't want to defer?
Yeah.
All right. Good.
Yes. Mr. Little, yes. Okay. Mr. Williams?
No.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Armitaur?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Five yeses and three noes.
Okay, so we need five to defer, right?
Correct.
All right. This is, it's deferred for thirty days or until our next meeting. Item thirteen. Take appropriate action on case RZ-04-026-17, a request by LOC Vault Plant Property LLC to rezone from light industrial to heavy industrial to allow heavy industrial development, petroleum storage at 564 Dennis Road and Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with a stipulation.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dickerson and a second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located in Carless and encompasses two acres. The previous owner operated an oil distribution center at this location, and the current owner plans a similar operation, but will add a tank farm for petroleum storage. The addition of bulk storage necessitates the zoning change. Because the use is consistent with the character of the area, the staff recommends that their request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments; that a drainage impact analysis is required unless appropriate waivers are granted by the Division of Engineering; and that a local development permit must be obtained within one year of zoning approval, or the property will revert to the original zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to item 13.